All right, we will call the February 8th Planning Commission meeting to order. We have Marvin, do we have anyone else joining us virtually? Brian, I know is not able to make it.
Rihanna's joining virtually and if there's one other person that's participating.
Is Bill joining us, Mr. Freeman?
He said he was going to be.
Okay.
Hey Bill, are you online? Oh, here he is. There he is.
There he is, all right, wonderful.
And if you're participating online, will you please unmute yourself to speak? Otherwise, keep yourself muted.
All right, very good. First saying, do we have any changes to the agenda? No changes? I'll take a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second, all in favor? opposed? Approval of the minutes from the January 11th meeting? Any changes that need to be made? Hearing none, I'll call for a motion to approve minutes from January 11th.
So moved.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Mr. Chairman, this is Bill Freeman. Do you, are you gonna call on us to vote that are on remote?
Yes, yes, Mr. Freeman, we're gonna start with those of us who are present here, and then I will call on you and Chairman King individually.
Great, thanks.
All right. Staff report, any comments on the staff report, any questions on the staff report? Very good. No consent agenda, no administrative approvals, I see. Any comments from the planning department?
Not at this time.
No, good, all right. Very good. So, moving on, first case for the night is case 2711. Who's got this case? All right, here we go.
Yes, sir. This is a variance request from the yard standards in the Neighborhood Conservation District. So, the subject property is located in the North Lamar Historic District, west of North 11th Street. Lot is just over an acre and is considered a flag lot, making it a legal non-conformity. I know many of you know this, but I just want to state that a flag lot is defined as a parcel of land that is situated behind a lot or multiple lots that fronts a street and are accessed by a driveway. The driveway is often referred to as the staff of the flag lots. For this particular lot vehicular access is taken from the west side of North 11th Street onto two narrow driveways that were considering the two staffs along the northeast and southeast points of the property. This lot contains six single-story duplexes built in 1971, and two existing single-family houses border the subject property's east property line along North 11th Street between the two vehicular points. The applicant received building permits for interior remodels in August, and that was when staff was made aware that they also went ahead without building permits and constructed two porches. These two porches are on the two duplexes nearest the east property line. One of the porches is six point, just over six feet off of the east property line at its closest point, and the other porch is just over seven feet from the east property line at its closest point. These porches have been constructed structurally integrated into the two duplex buildings through extensions of each of the building's roof lines, as you can see in the image. So this is where the issue from the Land Development Code and the planning department came up. This particular lot, as I stated, is located in the Neighborhood Conservation Overlay District, and the front yard setbacks within this district are determined by the planning director based on the unique characteristics of the street and the established pattern of setbacks in the neighborhood. Staff has interpreted this eastern property line as a front yard based on this side being the side that both points of vehicular access to North 11th Street are taken from. The Land Development Code, a portion of the definition of lot also states, "Such lot shall have frontage on a public or private street." So, the idea that the frontage correlates with the public street, even though these are very narrow, as you can see in the plan. It is a unique front setback determination, as I stated earlier, because it is a flag lot with two separate driveways, and is also an outlier in relation to other lots on the street. Majority of the street is a single-family, and are all within a line. Further complicating the situation is that this is an existing development with the rear of the structure is facing the determined front yard, as you can see. Try not to read all of the paraphrase. So then the applicant, in their application stated their hardship for requesting the variance. The applicant states that their hardship relates to the duplexes not having any outdoor space along the east side, and the yard areas on the sides on this side are quote-unquote "confined, claustrophobic, and unusable" due to their proximity to an existing fence along the neighboring properties. The units have been inhabited since the early 1970s without any porches or functioning outdoor space on this side, and the Land Development Code allows for fences to be proposed up to property lines. Staff does not believe that this is an example that demonstrates an unnecessary hardship for the applicant. There are several ways that this could have been proposed without having the variance issue. Of course, a building permit and the HPC being aware of the consideration would have been the first step. Porches on the other sides, the front and the side, there's plenty of room, generous space to propose a porch addition. And also, the Land Development Code has a definition for a deck, which is considered a roofless accessory structure that abuts a principal structure. Decks can be in a front or a side yard, and they can be up to five feet to a property As I've stated, this particular lot is a total deviation from the front yard built-to-line character of the other lots along North 11th Street, and no clear hardship has been demonstrated. These characteristics make it difficult for staff to recommend approval of the request. Staff recommends denial of the variance, but if planning commission wishes to approve the request, staff will recommend that a single condition that the variance be for the plot, the plan is submitted. I'd also like to mention that we received three letters from the public, and those are included in your report. I would say generally, these were not in favor of the request. The applicant is here, I think there's some people from the public here as well.
All right, very good. Where's the applicant? Mr. McCurdy, do you want to speak?
Hey, JW McCurdy here. I think Gray said about 19 times that this was a difficult site, and I would agree with him very much so. The reason for the porches on the rear of the property is there's not room on the north side of the property and the south side of the property, the porch would be encroaching on the driveway. And then on the west side of the properties, the porch would, porch would be encroaching on the parking. You know, the, I don't know that Gray was correct in that there were some decks on the back of those houses that we tore off, but I think that we're really here just discussing the roof of the structure. Because per the code, the deck can stay, which we haven't built the deck yet, but the deck can, the, what's under your feet can stay, so what we're really discussing is the roof of the structure that is within six feet of the neighbor's property. I don't, the, the neighbor's property fence, the fence that's actually on our property is 10 feet tall, so I, you know, I think that the eve or the cornice line is 10 foot six or something like that, so really only six sticking above the fence, six inches. If somebody were standing on a deck at the finished floor of the house, you wouldn't even be able to see that person standing on the deck. I don't, I don't, I understand that it wasn't in the plans, and I'm sure that if any of you ever been in the construction process, you understand that things change all the time. Every day, something changes and you, you know, you move along with it. We have submitted to the Historic Preservation Committee to add the porches, but I don't believe these properties are contributing. And, you know, these were some of the crappiest houses in, in old Oxford before we started working on them, and we spent a lot of money on them, making them nice, and I don't think that adding some covers over the porches is too imposing on the neighbors, especially inside of what we've already done to the property. Any questions for me?
Any questions from the commission for the applicant right now? And I know we have some community members who want to speak as well, so we'll get to them. None right now?
Yeah.
Mr. McCurdy, this is Bill Freeman remotely. Did you say there were decks on the back of these houses as they existed?
Yes, sir.
Prior to your renovations?
Yes, Mr. Freeman, he said there were prior to his renovations.
And do you know how, approximately how close they were to the fence?
No, sir, I don't recall.
Thank you.
Mr. King, do you have any questions?
Not at this, not, not at this moment. I might, once, once I've heard from everybody.
Mr. Murphy, did you say you had a question?
Yeah, why didn't you, why didn't you apply for this the first time?
Well, we, we weren't planning on putting covered porches on the houses, and then as we had some inquiries about leasing the property, they said they wanted covered porches, so we started putting covers on them. Never dawned on me that I, that wasn't included in the building permit, so when that was brought to the city hall's attention, we turned in the application that day, the day they contacted us, we turned it in that day.
Do y'all build from memory or from scratch, or do you have a document that lays out the plans for the house? You said you didn't know, that's what I'm asking, so did you know there would be?
Didn't know what?
That there was gonna be a porch, a roof line?
There wasn't going to be a porch, that's what I'm saying, it changed during the construction process.
Okay, and you just didn't think to apply for? That's what you're saying, you just didn't think about it?
Yeah, yeah, that's what I'm saying, yes.
Okay.
How's that a hardship?
Or, I mean, I don't, are you asking me a question? I mean?
Yeah, you have to have a hardship for us to grant a variance, you're standing here. You want a variance, I want another hardship.
It's in the application.
What, can you tell me?
Gray's got the application, he can read it. I mean, the engineer filled, I don't have the application, engineer filled out the application.
Was related to the confined, claustrophobic, unusable space on this side. So what the application's doing?
Mr. McCurdy, let me ask you, are you doing, Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
From my understanding, the city, when they were notified, they came and talked to you about the possibility of it being in the setback, is that correct?
Yes.
Did y'all continue to work on the structure after that?
We already had them framed, we put them in the dry so that we could not have water coming in the house, we hadn't done anything else to them. We may have hung two can lights in them or something like that, nothing significant. We have not painted them or finished them or anything like that.
All right, any other questions from the commission right now?
I mean, to me, I guess, part of the difficulty in the case is that, Mr. McCurdy, as you pointed out, we're discussing the letter of the code versus the spirit. I mean, the floor could be there by right regardless, it's really about the roof line. And, I mean, in this case, it's a tough one. I think there's, there's some consternation that it was built without the permit and the plans, but when it comes down to it, at the end of the day, you know, it's, you have a five-foot setback with a deck and a 10-foot setback with something with a roof.
All right. And no other questions, we're gonna move to the audience. Many, I know we have a couple folks that would like to speak, I believe. So if you'd like to speak, just come on up and identify yourself, please, to the commission.
Thank you, I'm Steve McDavid, I'm the adjoining property owner. Let me start off, if I can, by correcting a few things that Mr. McCurdy said. The building behind my house never had a deck back there, it's never had one. Now, he may have been thinking of other buildings in this acre lot, but behind mine, there was never a deck, okay? Second thing that I think's a misunderstanding is, he built decks on seven of the buildings, not just these two. The reason that we're here today is because he built these two inside any variance setback line you can think of, and I realized it, alerted Ben, and Ben sent somebody over to stop, okay? And as Duncan mentioned, they continued to work on it a week after they sought a variance. They did build out the roof, there's a picture up here where the fellow's on the roof putting shingles on the porch, and they did finish out the roof after they'd applied for the variance. He clearly knows the rules, he's clearly flaunting the rules, he's coming before you to ask for forgiveness instead of permission. I don't know what sanctions and powers you have against him on the property overall, but I think you can look at his conduct in considering whether to give him permission to go forward. If you look at the picture on the bottom left of the screen, that's looking out his back door at the fence. And, just to let you know, and if you flip back to the picture of his front yard, he has a half-acre lot in front of him. He mentioned that it, putting a porch or a deck on the front might impinge the parking, yet I've measured it, there's 25 feet between the building and where the existing parking for those structures begin. All along the front of that building, there's 25 feet, he could have a huge deck or porch without ever violating a setback. Another thing to remember is, this is a front yard setback, which if it wasn't for this, what's called historical overlay, it would be 35 feet. The building is 16 feet from the property line, so, you know, he doesn't have the right to build up to 10 feet from the property line if it's a front setback. He builds zero roof, okay? So, I would just consider his conduct in this, and also consider it's a front setback question. And then I think there is one more question I'd like to bring up. Everybody seems to assume that he can build a deck out there, and I may misunderstand the code, but this is from, this is from the code as it sits now, it defines a deck as an accessory structure under 311-1. And then under 311-1-5, it says accessory structures may only be erected behind the front building line and not in the front yard. Okay, so if this is a front-facing lot, this is the front yard, and it cannot build a deck here. What he can build is what he balled, steps into the backyard. There was no front porch, there was no back porch. I'm not sure how historical preservation rules work, but it seems like before he builds a porch on the front and the back, those rules need to be addressed, and they need to decide whether adding all of these porches is in keeping with the historical neighborhood he's building them in, not just mine, like mine's a variance in its prohibited period. But I may be wrong, but that's how I read the rules, is that he can't have a porch, an accessory structure in the front yard, and this is a front-facing lot.
Mr. McDavid, I can clarify that. I mean, the definition you're reading is for accessory uses or structures, and accessory amenities falls under accessory uses, but it's not defined as an accessory structure.
Okay, I'm sorry, can you say that again, JR?
Accessory use is a larger category than accessory structure, and accessory amenity, which is what a deck would be, is not an accessory structure, under the definitions in Article 10.
Which we have agreed that that defines the accessory structure to include a deck.
No, it's an accessory use, because the definition is for accessory uses or structures.
Right, uses or structures?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, a deck is an object, so it's hard for it to be a use. So, now, there are two places that come to the term accessory amenity is used. And it says, a desirable use of a feature associated with use of a building, such as a pile pit or a deck. There's also a definition of a deck, it's defined as an accessory structure. So, unless I'm reading it wrong, 311-1-5 says accessory structures may only be erected behind the front line and not in the front yard. A deck is an accessory structure.
And 3.2.1 says, "An accessory amenity may be located in a front or side yard."
So I would say that there's some confusion in the code, okay?
And, and what I tried to clarify, at least my understanding, is an accessory amenity is an accessory, accessory use.
Where is that defined? Where is accessory amenity defined within accessory uses?
It's not, it's not defined within accessory uses, it's defined in Section 10 as separate from accessory structure. 10.2, it defines them separately.
So we have a deck defined in three different ways?
We have, I mean, in 10.2, it defines a deck as an amenity accessory, and it defines a pool as an accessory structure, for example.
JR, I have to, my understanding is that the reason we're here is that the planning department's construction of the code. Ambiguities that may or may not exist notwithstanding was that if there was a non-covered deck, that the non-covered deck could potentially go in some portion of that space. Now, what we're talking about today is only the fact that it was a covered structure. So, if, Steve, if you disagree with Ben, or if Ben allows something to go forward, there are procedures under code for handling that, but that's not what this variance is about, I don't think.
Yeah, well.
Well, it's, it is a.
I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time hearing whoever was just speaking.
Sorry, Bill, it's Paul, I forgot to mic up. I, I was just pointing out that the, the construction of the not uncovered deck, that the planning department had made the interpretation that that would be allowed, it's the fact that it's covered that was the purpose of the variance, but sorry about that.
Thanks.
Paul, am I supposed to file an injunction if he starts to build a deck and I disagree?
I would rather you didn't file an injunction, but Steve, this, this isn't really an issue we can work out on the fly, in the fly, in the middle of the planning commission meeting. If that's a discussion that needs to be had with the planning department, then, you know, you can certainly sit down and have that discussion with them.
Okay.
I mean, to, to Paul's point, I think what Paul's saying is that if you disagree with the planning department's interpretation, that's challengeable, but it's separate from this variance.
All right. Would a, let me ask a quick question, Ben or Paul? And I'm not, I agree, I think we're kind of getting over here a little bit, but, you know, would a deck be something that also had to be included on, you know, a blueprint site plan, you know, that goes in front of historic?
We would take a look at a deck, anything that's constructed, for consideration for a certificate of appropriateness, absolutely.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay. Anything else, Mr. McDavid?
No, I would just, I believe, agree with the planning commission that this variance to encroach upon the front yard setback be denied.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone else from the audience, or who has tuned in online who would like to Okay. Hearing none, I will take any motions on case 2711.
Motion to deny, and I would like to know, there is mention of like fees, I think, in Mr. McDavid's letter. What is, what is the point of what we're doing here if we're not gonna ask people to come and get approval first? This build first, ask permission later bothers me tremendously. This is a planning, planning, plan ahead. If you can't plan ahead, you don't need to be doing what you're doing, you need to find something else to do. If you're not organized enough to be able to do that, I've got a big issue, and I want to know, can anybody speak into, I would like to motion that any fees or fines that we can put on Mr. McCurdy to deter this behavior, and others in the community to deter this behavior, what are they?
Um, yeah, Paul, why don't you come on up here, and I'll just kind of repeat the question is, if the variance is denied, what are the repercussions, you know, for the developer in terms of fees and the structure that's been built and what, you know, and obviously, the applicant can appeal to the Board of Aldermen, you know, but if they too, well, we'll see if we have a second, but go ahead and speak to that, would you, Paul?
Yeah, and, and it's a good question, we've had this come up before. This, this falls largely in the area of enforcement. Y'all don't have the authority to assess separate fees, because what happens is, if there is a, a, any violation of the Land Development Code or the Building Code is a misdemeanor criminal offense, it's punishable like other violations of municipal ordinances. And usually in this area, instead of, you know, our, just police officers on patrol, we have our code enforcement folks who are out checking on that, and they have the ability to swear out citations for violations of those, like, like any other offense, and those can go up through municipal court, and the court would adjudicate whether that person is guilty of those violations, and assess whatever fine is allowed, and that the judge thinks is appropriate under the circumstances. So the answer is, it goes up through municipal court like any other violation. Now, most of the time, what we have here, like Steve sees something, he doesn't think it's right, he calls Ben, and Ben sends somebody out there, and they either put a formal stop work order on the project, or they tell them, "You can't do this for X, Y, Z reasons." If you want to try to, you know, rectify that, we usually give an applicant the, the ability to do that, to, to try to bring it into compliance, either by coming to y'all, or by fixing it, or something like that. But if there is, I mean, if, if somebody does deliberately violate. But if there is, I mean, if somebody does deliberately violate the code, I mean, our code enforcement folks who are OPD officers have the ability to swear out those complaints. And it's perfectly within y'all's province to, you know, to comment on that and to draw attention to that. But it's not to assess those types of fines and penalties, if that makes sense.
Paul, let me ask you one more for that. In terms of the work that has been done that's at issue here that we're talking about, what about that?
Well, if, assuming that the variance gets denied, then it's work that's out of compliance. I mean, you're right, the applicant would have the ability under the code to, since they've gone through the variance process, to appeal that to the mayor and Board of Aldermen. And assuming, without, you know, guessing what the Board of Aldermen would do, that they also deny that appeal, then under the planning department's interpretation of the code, there is a condition that's out of compliance, right? And so typically, what they would do is have communication with the developer and say, "There is some reasonable period of time for you to bring this into compliance." And bringing it into compliance means whatever it has to mean to...
So that's not anything that needs to be included separately? It's just all wrapped into the decision-making process right now?
Right, the decision-making process that y'all are faced with is whether you're going to grant this specific mechanism. If it's not granted, and it needs to go forward, and at some point, the applicant is not able to correct the deficiency, then...
I'm sorry, Paul, I can save you a lot of time with the explanation. If y'all deny, I'm going to take the roof off tomorrow. I am awful, I'm in the week, so I mean, it's really... Y'all keep it dead, or, you know, so we mess up, no big deal. We won't take care of it.
And that's what we imagine would usually happen and does usually happen.
Thank you for that. JW, I appreciate that, thank you, JW.
So, anyway, I won't belabor the point.
All right, so we have a motion to deny the variance. Do I have a second?
That's Bill Freeman, I was second in motion.
Okay, I have a motion to deny, and I have a second. All in favor of the motion? Okay. Mr. Chairman King?
Uh, yes.
Okay, and Mr. Freeman will ask you again?
Yes.
All right, and the motion to deny passes, so. Yes. Yeah, I think everyone voted yes. All right, next up, we have case twenty-seven twelve, Rayner Eye Clinic and Surgery.
Okay, so I guess I'll start with the update first. There's been a little tweak to the staff report since it was posted the first go-around. One of the conditions has been satisfied regarding metal paneling. This, the subject property is located on about two acres in the Oxford Farms development. It is on the west side of South Lamar Boulevard, south of Oxford Way. The applicant is proposing to construct a sixteen thousand nine hundred and sixty square foot eye clinic and surgery center. As to use requirements, medical facilities of under twenty-five thousand square foot are permitted uses in T and B districts. Additionally, medical facilities at T and B are restricted to twenty thousand square foot footprint. This site plan complies with these standards. With parking, essentially, the variance for the parking that is proposed was granted in December, case twenty-seven oh two, for ninety-six parking spaces. For coverage, height and setback requirements, the T and B districts allow for up to eighty percent lot coverage. The applicant is proposing seventy-nine point eight percent coverage. T and B allows for single-story by special exception, which was received in December of 2020 in case twenty-seven oh one. T and B districts also have front setbacks of between zero and fifty-eight, and applicant received variance in December of 2020, case twenty-seven hundred, for a front setback of ninety foot. As to other review elements, the proposed landscape design meets all requirements for parking lot trees and landscaping standards, and foundation plannings have been provided for each side of the building. Lighting, the photometric study's been provided. That generally maintains light on site. Access, the property will take access from South Lamar, from a shared drive on the south side of the property, and from Oxford Way across the property to the north. For building materials, the current plan has been changed since it was written, and now is all brick, sod, wood timbers and asphalt shingles. There is a possibility that the applicant will come back at a later time to revise the architect rules. If they do want to use metal paneling, that would be a special exception as per section five point six point one point eight A. Signage is a separate approval process. Engineering, there's not really going to be a whole lot of traffic for this one particular use, but in the future, there is probably going to be a signalized intersection at Oxford Farms Drive, is that it? Oxford Bligh, wait, yeah, Oxford Bligh. But that'll be a little bit later when the traffic study calls for that. One little thing is still being negotiated between engineering and the applicant about stormwater drainage, or maybe it wasn't that big a deal. So from that, staff recommends approval of the site plan for Rayner Eye Clinic with the following conditions, that approval is for the site plan as submitted and approval of the stormwater management plan.
All right, very good. Applicant, is the applicant here, Representative Joe? You got anything else that you need to? All right, any questions from the commission? No? Any questions from our commissioners online?
Just one, Mr. Bill Freeman. The width of the driveways, the fire department's okay with that?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Very good. All right, hearing no others, do I have a motion for case twenty-seven twelve?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve.
Subject to staff conditions.
Subject to staff conditions. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
I'll give it to Joseph here. All right, have a motion and a second. All in favor? Opposed? All right, thank you.
Remotely.
Oh, I'm sorry, yep. Chairman King?
Remote, yes.
Chairman Freeman?
Yes.
All right, we're good. Moving on to our final case of the evening. This is a wonderful thing, case twenty-seven thirteen.
Thank you. This is a request for final plat approval for the Heights subdivision phases sixteen and eighteen, which total, which includes a total of twenty single-family lots with one common area. A preliminary plat with twelve phases totaling one hundred and sixty-eight lots was approved by the Mayor and Board of Aldermen on June eighteenth of 2019. The approved plan for the Heights phases sixteen and eighteen included a total of twenty-four lots. However, the final plat indicates four fewer lots and a common area. Case twenty-four eighty-seven, a variance, the setback requirements and special exception for patio homes was also granted by the Planning Commission at the May 2019 meeting. The lots proposed in this final plat comply with all technical standards of the Land Development Code. It is important to note that both of these phases are not located in the Oxford Commons pud boundary. However, the area was included in the tree mitigation variance that was granted by the Planning Commission in January of 2016. Therefore, a conservation easement of the fourteen percent of the entire area is required and has been provided. Engineering did provide comments. The, as indicated, that the approval was before the Planning Commission for the preliminary plat in May of 2019. The preliminary plat approval granted permission for the construction of infrastructure such as water, sewer and streets. Since that time, the infrastructure has been installed, and a final inspection has been completed, with only a few punch list items remaining. City-owned water and sewer infrastructure is located within the street. Stormwater management is provided for these phases through an existing detention pond located to the west of Phase seven. Private drainage easements are shown on the plat for the private storm drainage pipes that convey water from the backyards to the storm drains in the street. A bond for the final lift of the asphalt surface and the required warranty bond have been received in anticipation of the Board of Aldermen acceptance of the completed infrastructure at the February sixteenth meeting. There is a small pond-shaped hole to the west of Lot one oh six. This area was created at the request of adjacent lot owners during construction and is not related to stormwater detention. It is graded according to the wishes of the owner. There is a proposed retaining wall at the rear of Lot one oh six that was not shown in the preliminary plans. Due to the elevations proposed, it will be necessary to construct a swale at the top of the berm to ensure that water does not over-top the wall and create drainage or erosion issues in the common area below the wall or the private lots to the south or west. Construction plans provided do not show the current shape of the pond, of the pond-shaped hole or the swale on the grading plan, sheet four point zero. But Precision has provided a plan sheet titled Drainage Improvements that shows a swale with a pipe leading from the pond-shaped hole. The slope between the retaining wall and the adjacent lots fifty-nine through fifty-seven is required to be three to one per section five point seven, point seven point two of the Land Development Code. The design engineer must also confirm the water is not being directed in a new direction. Staff recommends approval of this final plat with the following conditions. Approval by the Mayor and Board of Aldermen is required. Copy of the covenants for the subdivision are to be submitted to the Planning Department prior to Mayor and Board of Aldermen approval. Excuse me, that's an edit. The area adjacent to lots fifty-nine through fifty-seven must be graded on a three to one or flatter slope. The construction plans provided must be updated to reflect the drainage swale adjacent to the retaining wall and the final grading of the common area west of Lot one oh six. And lastly, the final plat must be updated to indicate that the owner of Lot one oh six is the owner of the retaining wall and responsible for maintenance, with an easement to be granted from the Homeowners Association for access to the common area as needed. And I see John is in here from Precision to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay. Do y'all have any questions? Not just one, did I? All right, tell me about this hole that was dug out, that wasn't on the site plan, that's supposed to be common space for everyone that looks awful.
Then, during the construction of the site, the contractor built a berm around the site to keep stormwater from washing off and onto the back of the lots of, you know where Mr. Trammell Wales lives, that area right there? I think it's lots fifty-six, fifty-seven, fifty-eight, anyway. That berm blew out during a large storm event and washed water and mud onto it, and that concerned the adjoining owners.
Okay.
It wouldn't do that once the construction was complete, because the water would be diverted in another direction. But they asked us to do something to improve the drainage, and David was willing to do so, you know, as long as it didn't cost a fortune. And that's just the plan we came up with.
Okay. Um, you know, I, I, I gotta call, this isn't gonna, you know, impact me in approving this site plan, but we got to fix that for a variety of reasons, you know? You know, and I'm just seeing, I'm probably gonna add a condition on here that we go back and we need to landscape that, and we need to, you know, plant some trees in there, you know, so that it doesn't, I don't know what it's supposed to be right now.
You don't, it's an eyesore.
How, how long is, I mean, like if we didn't maybe do something to it, how long will it be like that? I mean, how, are you talking a couple of months, or are you talking a year?
Were y'all planning on doing anything to it?
When will it be returned in David's, you know, plan of this? When would it be returned to something better?
That is a question I can't really answer.
Because they dug it out about three feet, right?
It's dug out about a foot or so lower than I'd planned for it to be, but there's a reason for that, too. There was an existing inlet down there that I thought the adjoining owners had put in, but it wasn't, it's my fault. It was a, it was a temporary easement, a temporary inlet that the contractor had put in. So that's the reason it wound up about a foot lower than it was supposed to be.
So when you say the water that was causing the blowout that needed this extra, you said when construction's finished, it wouldn't do that anymore.
That's right.
When is that?
Well, it's meant to be permanent. And it's for more, it's as much appearance as anything else to keep the adjacent landowners from thinking or to prevent it from any stormwater at all from getting onto the adjoining landowners.
I understand that. I'm back to my question of, when will it not be necessary anymore to keep them from feeling like they're going to get water? When will the construction, which is done, once the construction's done, this won't happen anymore?
The construction is done.
Okay, so it is time to turn that back into what it used to be?
Well, it's, it was meant to be permanent. That hole was meant to be there permanently.
Okay. Never mind.
So, but it was never on any of the plans?
It was, it's just a little deeper than it was originally. About a foot.
So it was, so it was on the plans, but the homeowner asked for y'all to dig it a little bit deeper?
The homeowners were interested in the area where we put the berm and the swale. And I needed a place to make sure that that water, I had a place to put that water. And that's the reason the hole got where it's at.
Okay. I just, like I said, I wasn't expecting that when I drew out there, and there's a hole that just...
All right, any other questions from?
I'm not sure who this question is for, but the ties to a bigger issue that I've got, but not with this, but the responsibility, number five, the responsibility for the maintenance of the wall. How big is the retaining wall, I guess, first question? How tall is, are proposed to be?
It's six foot.
Okay. Just out of curi, I'm curious, you may not have decided this, but the responsibility's on the homeowner, why is it not on the HOA, Homeowners Association?
The wall is on the property line, but is on the lot line. One side is HOA, the other side is the lot.
I know, so we had to pick one. I was just curious, why we chose the homeowner over the HOA? Does it matter, is my question?
I just picked one. Be honest with you, I just picked one.
Okay.
I was trying to think what David would want me to do, so I just picked one.
The reason I'm asking is this is a wall to a common area for the whole neighborhood. So it seems like it would be a costly shared by the entire neighborhood, not just one unlucky homeowner.
The wall was put there in order to accommodate a house on the lot. If we're wanting, trying to put a house there, we wouldn't need the wall. So that's how I felt about it, but David might like to rather have it on the Homeowners Association. I'll ask him if that would, that's all right.
I'm just, I was just curious where it came from. His idea was it, that kind of thing, so anyway, that's all I got, man.
Commissioner Gray, this is Bill Freeman. I have a question, really, that...
Commissioner Gray, this is Bill Freeman. I have a question, really, that relates to our wording on the second condition on the recommendation. Do we need to put some sort of modifier in there that we get an acceptable copy or a copy of acceptable covenant or something like that? This makes it sound like as long as they file anything with us, well, then we move forward.
Paul, I'm gonna let you answer that one.
Hey, Bill, it's Paul. Um, this is fairly standard for us to just have a copy, but we don't have an ordinance that did, well, I don't want to say that too broadly. We have several ordinances that require you to provide for certain things in your covenants, like, uh, stormwater detention, who's responsible for prorata shares of, uh, of those improvements. But beyond that, we don't dictate what the covenants are. So the purpose of that is just for us to know that the covenants address the things we need them to and that, that we have a copy of them. So, and, and that is the case in here, and they have, I think, I just looked at the stormwater language on the plat, so I, I don't think it's a problem in this case.
Thank you, Paul. Uh, I have one other question, and that relates to, Ben mentioned, uh, that there was a, a slight punch list. Do we need to say anything in here that we're conditioned upon completion of that prior to going to the Board of Alderman?
I can answer that question.
Thank you, Rihanna.
This is Rihanna. The punch list is an engineering item. It's for the infrastructure and the punch list issues would be addressed for the Board of Alderman acceptance. I just noted it in here, um, just for the records.
Great, thanks, Rihanna. That's all I've got.
All right. Um, very good. Any other questions, comments? Okay. Hearing no, and, um, I'm going to ask for a motion and at the same time offer the motion with one more condition added. Uh, y'all can shoot me down or not, you know, but I'm gonna make a motion to approve with a sixth condition that the landscaping of the hole and common area, uh, with appropriate canopy trees and ornamental shrubs, um, be done. So that's my motion with the added condition. Now, is there a second?
Second.
I have a second. So there's a motion and there's a second. Chairman or, Commissioner King?
Yes.
Commissioner Freeman?
Yes.
All in favor? All right. And it passes. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
All right. Hearing or seeing that we have no other cases?
Can I, I hate to do this-
Yes.
This is our short night, but this deck thing is bothering me.
I got you.
Which I'd already had a conversation with Ben about it earlier in the week. I mean, you know, I don't want somebody building a deck up to my property line. But we need some, I mean, I hope that never comes back. I'm, we, that's, you know, you shouldn't be able to add on a deck to your house that goes right up to somebody else's property line. That's-
So like the accessory structure provision, um, we, we do require five feet from the property line. Um, so, no different than if you were to build a garden shed or something like that, you have to do it five feet from your property line. An accessory amenity would also have to be, it would be subject to that same standard.
I think what you're saying is five feet's still pretty close.
Even if a setback is thirty feet.
You're not standing and chatting and smoking and listening to music or whatever in your garden shed.
Well, you could have a-
You know what I mean.
You could have a pool house that has, um, that's an accessory structure.
Yeah.
And it could be there and it could have, um, a deck.
Or-
Who was that?
It was the room freshener. The air freshener.
Thank you, cause the stink.
So I just said a, a, a garden shed, a carport, a, um, uh, like I said, a, a guest house. Those are typically required, um, so it's typically required because you have five feet from your property line, your neighbor has five feet from your property line, and that's what the fire code requires, uh, between structures.
But a deck is attached to your house. That's what makes it-
A deck is more budding to your house.
More intrusive just because of the proximity to the-
It's just part of your house, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
I do think there is some language in there that we probably need to take a look at and-
Yeah, and then obviously there's-
And become consistent and clean up.
Before it comes out, we should figure that out.
Well, and as Paul mentioned, um, you know, I think what makes this one difficult too is because it's a flag lot. I think that doesn't, doesn't help the situation.
I think that was the problem.
Very good.
Okay.
Well, it makes the front yard designation somewhat arbitrary.
That's right.
Yeah. Well, with a deck part, yes.
That's right.
I agree with that.
All right. Um, any other-
Just one more point of that. I mean, in the definition of structures, there are things that by common language use, you would identify as a structure that are excluded from structures. So, I think if we have different categories of things that have a physical presence that are attached to the ground, that maybe we need to list all of them in each category.
A deck is a structure in your, I mean, if somebody says structure, that's what we think of.
Yeah, but within, you know, if you look at the definition, there are things that are explicitly excluded from structures. And then we have this amenity, uh, accessory amenity definition, which is something basically a budding a structure that can be built. Um, and in some places, deck seems to be lumped in with accessory structures and in some places it's split out.
Because it's difficult to write a catch-all.
Yeah.
It's, it's difficult to write a catch-all that encompasses everything that we see.
Yep.
You know, so in some instances, you can have a deck that is an accessory structure, and I think in other instances, you can have a, a deck that is an accessory amenity. So I think that's what, you know, it's, it's difficult to codify every particular situation, which is why you do have interpretation provisions and you do have an, a, an appeals process to go through, uh, when you have those situations and, um, but I, I, I understand what you're saying, and we've wrestled this as well as we've contemplated development over the years in trying to facilitate some things that, uh, we see that are good, but also sometimes it could be, um, um, you know, not the way maybe that you had hoped for it to be or intended. But I mean, I think, uh, sometimes you just have to accept that, you know, and, and set it up, when you set up the code provision.
Very good. Anything else? All right.
Motion to adjourn.
All right, there's my motion to adjourn. Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Get in adjourned.